My name is Mike Tuvayz. I am the board's chair. I'll be running the meeting this evening. Let me introduce the members. Mr. Charlie O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Rydel, Mr. Frank, oh, Mr. Frank was not here. I can't introduce him. And Mr. Himmel is here. I collect Ms. Murphy and Jay Gooker, the official director of the special services. If you have a cell phone, can you turn it off or put it on vibration? You want to speak to one another, please step outside. It's very hard to hear in this room because the system does not work. You're going to testify this evening. You need to take it out, do it under oath. And Mr. Chin, if you can... Anyone who wants to testify, please stand up, raise your right hand. Anybody who wants to come up here and speak. Will you speak if you're going to come up here and speak?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
Yes, I do.
First, I want to have a motion to waive the reading of the previous minutes, which was June 13th. We're waiving them. We have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the minutes of the meeting of June 13th.
Second.
Our motion, on favor?
Aye.
We have it, okay. First piece of business, matter number 16-086, Street, C Street, Quincy LLC. Robert Gallagher, manager for a variance filing to amended decision previously issued in ZBA case number 4302 and case 08015, which required the lots remain in common ownership on the premises number 1269 C Street Quincy. Is their representative here? Okay. You recommend that we vote, Councilor?
Good evening, Margaret LaFara. So I did see Mr. Harris come here. I believe he's in the hallway. It's my understanding this matter is being continued. It's a pending matter for city business. The city council is in recess for the summer. My request had been not to have this board vote on this matter until things were prepared before the city. But that was my request, that let's come in with what's happening, be very clear and concise, make sure there's neighborhood notification. And I put on Facebook today that this would not be heard because that was my understanding and would obviously require ensure that neighbors have noticed because they aren't going to want to speak on this matter. So my request is that this be continued, not just carried forward at each meeting, but let's look at a late September, early October date. So we have, you know, it's still being carried on your books, but more to a date, more likely to have all of the other allocated work.
Thank you.
In my... Thank you.
I have a letter from you, but for the record, you are?
For the record, Christopher Harrington, I represent Bob Gallagher and Louis Restaurant. I spoke to Chris Walker in the mayor's office today and I requested a 30-day continuance. Mr. Walker believes that within the next 30 days, we'll have an appraisal done on the property and a purchase and sale agreement drafted for the city to buy this piece of land from Louis Restaurant. So that was why I was requested for 30 days.
Thank you. This, Councilor?
Yeah.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
The official is requesting 30-day extension, but you've indicated one more time today.
I have not heard that from the mayor's office. I know that it will require a vote before the city council. We did give an authorization for funding, previously voted, and now it would be a matter of, is it agreeable to the city council to accept that price? I can't imagine, the earliest that could be on the agenda would be the first September agenda. I don't have that date, a calendar open in front of me, but...
That would be September 20th, no, September 12th.
September 12th. Would be the first council meeting?
One day of that meeting.
First zoning. When's the first council meeting? So what's the...
September 26th.
You guys don't meet the Tuesday after the evening, right?
The Tuesday after the evening.
Do you guys meet that?
I can grab my calendar and check.
So now you're talking about closing this?
What about September 26th? We'd have a September meeting.
You get September 26th.
Right. Because for them, the pressing matter is the sale, not necessarily the subdivision, right? I mean, I think that's, you know, would be incumbent upon the board. If a decision's been made by the governing authority to make the acquisition, one should come before the other. I just think it's a little bit parlor for the horse. So that was my request. I have not heard from the mayor's office. I would say 30 days is aggressive if they are defer to the mayor's office. I think if you don't want to give a date certain at this point, let's coordinate back. But to me, it makes sense to come in with a clean zoning. I mean, if the sale's going to be the PNS, you can't take action until that deal is complete. So that was the logistics, but if you don't want to name the date at this point, we can follow up and communicate. Anyone in the audience on this matter?
Does it make sense to push the date to that? And if for some reason it's, we'll notify everyone if it's before. Just push it to that 25th or whatever.
Well, let's take another one more second.
Who's here for this matter? Anyone by rates of hands here specifically? Okay, so Louis?
We're going to wait till... Is that a 26th?
26th.
26th?
We prefer not to. We've got to, we want to work on refinancing the property and transferring the licenses.
See, what I'm looking at is, I think, Councilor, that without the zoning, there's no purchase and sale.
No, not at all.
And so I think...
Time out. I wouldn't support the purchase. I wouldn't support the subdivision. I will only support subdivision if the city's the buyer. So if we give a clear zoning, the city's not the buyer, the neighbors are not looking to have this lot developed. So it is very distinct to me specifically. So I think that to give a clear zoning separation without knowing that the city's firm is a buyer, I wouldn't be doing my job for the neighborhood if I could allow that at this point. So I'm comfortable that there is process happening offline that will be happening through the summer. I'd be comfortable with this board saying date to be continued, date to be determined, and we can maybe work up on what the understanding is of their process. But most definitely neighborhood notification on how to have...
I tend to go with the September 26th date for us.
I mean, I just think it's a clean, here it is, and here's the...
Yeah.
If there's something holding up, I mean, what if the price comes in and the vote is no-go? I just want to, I would just think the council vote should proceed as long as, that's my request on the process.
Let's move this to the 26th.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 16-086, C Street Quincy LLC, Robert Gallagher, manager of a variance, finding a variance or amended decision previously issued in ZBA case number 4302 and case number 08-415, which required the lots to remain in common ownership on the premises number 1269 C Street Quincy. I recommend that I make a motion to continue this until September 26th.
Second.
Hold on a second.
Aye.
Matter number Z17-45, Hope Co Realty LLC, for clarification modification of the definition of ZBA case number 12-022, business professional and general offices to include an counseling professional on the premises number 36 Mel's Style Road. If Quincy is their official or their representative here.
Yes. We're the members of the chairman, we're the members of the board. My name is Robert Hernandez, and I represent the applicant. The applicant, as this board may know, recently purchased Martin Miller Styles, which is 36 Mel's Style Road. It's the old South Street Chamber of Commerce building. Well, they've started redoing work both inside and outside. They're renewing it. This beautiful building needs work, and they're working on it. Well, one of the things they're doing, they're a treatment center where they have professional counseling going on there. There was some concern as to whether that fit within what the board outlined in 2012 as to what could be here. The board specifically ruled in 2012 that Quincy Social, I'm sorry, Social Chamber of Commerce can only be used for no other use in business, professional, or other general offices. We're coming before this board just to clarify that, that we are using the building strictly for professional offices. There are counseling groups going on there. There's also counseling, I'm sorry, there's individual counseling and also group counseling there. They also do have AA meetings there. And we submit to the board that that is, under the ruling of 2012, a professional use, either professional or office use. And so we're just coming before the board, any concerns the neighborhood may have, we publicize this. We've also met with Councilor Brad Crowe and also another member of the community there to explain what we're doing here. Again, this is, the applicant had to do a lot of work to the property, with the gaps in the building structure. Make it nice. It's a beautiful building, but it needs updating. They do not plan, and I know there's a concern this, they do not plan on turning this into residence at all. It is absolutely going to be a professional office. It's going to be run during the day, you know, on Saturday, and I believe Sundays. But that's all it's going to be. So we're coming before the board just to clarify the use. I'm not sure the board has to take a vote, other than maybe voting that the use we suggest isn't in the parameters or the zoning board didn't determine.
Any questions?
I have a question. You say daytime hour operation?
Yeah, oh, yes, yes. There will not be any night... One of the concerns the neighborhood had is it will be overnights, no overnights at all.
Are bigger the group meetings?
The group meetings will range, and I apologize that we have someone here. I think the group meetings will range approximately 15 people, approximately 15 people. And they all live in the neighborhood. In fact, there's a house they use right on Elsie that they, again, the same applicant redeveloped that house, a beautiful house, where they live there, they will be commuting from there. And there will not be actually walking, having bus transportation. They're on vans, they'll commute to that.
Okay, thank you. No questions?
Charlie asked my question. No overnight stay, right?
No, no overnight stay at all. There's going to be no medical treatment or anything like that.
Okay, can we do that? If anyone wants to speak in favor, in favor, once, twice, three times, I call the hearing over. Correspondents, we review the stability of both projects. They have no comments this time. That is from the Department of Public Works. If anyone wants to speak, opposed or undecided, opposed or undecided, once?
I just have a question. I live next to a business in my neighborhood. So I don't live near where your project is, but how late would the operations run? Like if they had group counseling in the evening, would it be like a seven to nine kind of thing? Because for me, that would be an issue if I lived in that neighborhood.
I think it would be six to nine.
Six to nine, so that would be...
The regular group counseling that happens, just about every other, say, in the evening, they happen all over the city.
No, but I mean, if you have residents around here, I mean, if you have children who are school age, one of the lights are on, you're dark. So that's just, my only comment to the board is to be mindful of, if you have residents in the area, to be mindful of a rassell or a business and that the lights are turned off and if they...
Okay, thank you.
To the board.
Yeah, get what to bring. That's fine.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'm new to this.
Anyone else wants to speak opposed or undecided?
Once, twice, three times?
Counselor might want to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor. I think it's okay. No problem.
Kind of out of sorts. Marty's not up here yelling at people. For the record, Brad Crowe, 65 Gaia Street Ward, City Councilor. As the applicant's attorney had already previously alluded to, I hosted a neighborhood meeting in this facility downstairs last Wednesday. So I met with the applicant and one of the area residents and their partners were notified and urged to attend and weigh in. You know, we share obviously the same sentiment of keeping it, you know, very neighborhood friendly. The concern to come out of the meeting was being memorialized here today by Attorney Hernandez, where it was thought about, you know, is there going to be a residential development coming soon with here near you? That's not the intention. For the record, I know that I was here with the board one time prior regarding the applicant. They have since made a substantial investment into a plied property, a running recovery home, and have not heard a peep. So that's one thing that I always hold, you know, kind of here is, you know, how you handle yourself after the board approves. I can say that these folks, you know, have lived up to everything that they've said. And, you know, Attorney Hernandez had talked about the additional investment into, you know, the exterior features. Obviously a walk-in addition. Beautiful property, everyone agrees with that. But again, I just want more for the board to know that we did have, and I think it's important, and my role as the city council to have a neighborhood meeting and allow folks to provide input. So with that being said, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Cool, that part of the hearing closed. Any questions, comments, what we thinking?
The only question I have is Attorney Hernandez's comment. Do we have to vote? Or is it just if we weren't going to approve it, is that where we would stand? Or do we, does anybody have any clarification? Jay, maybe?
I've actually thought about that. I think, I think we vote that the use should be consistent with prior ruling of the, of the name of 2012 or the zoning board, that the use would be consistent.
Yeah, I think that's probably, we can't just say no.
Yes.
Yeah. It's the humble evening.
I don't have a problem with it.
All right. That being said, as long as we're voting, that was the only question I'm voting. I'm in favor of the use.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I'd just like to see adherence to the hours. You know, I mean, I prefer that not get out of control there and get excited.
I will tell, and I can see the concern, and I will address that concern. These are people that are in programs to do right now outside, and they're mandated to report back to the program at a certain point, so it cannot be late at nighttime.
Okay. If he want, he want to put in that, he doesn't consistent and want to disclose by night clock?
I think that, I think that'd be all right. I'm sure Brad will be...
Do I have a motion?
I'm just going to use the previous, probably my previous claim of the past. Is that all right? Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z17-45, Hope Co Realty LLC, for clarification modification of the definition of ZBA case 12-022, business professional, general offices, be included to add counseling on the premises number 36 Mel's Style Road Quincy. It is our belief that this is consistent with the previous case, the language is, this use is consistent with the previous language in case 12-022.
Second?
Second.
The motion seen on all favor?
Aye.
I think you pause. He just there right there. I just want the board to know that the applicant and Sagmaw's would draw that application. They will draw, they restart the whole process, all of the design.
Okay, so can we motion to the board on that?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case 16-085, Todd Heagan, for a special permit of variance to erect a new nine-unit residential building with parking on ground level on the premises number 92 Sagmaw Street. I'd like to take a, make a motion to draw, rather than just...
Second?
A motion seen on all favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Attorney.
Matter number... Mr. Victor. Victor, show up for this all for me. Okay, continuing on, matter Z17-37, Rowan and Zagby, Zandy, for a finding through the walls of the existing home or reconstruct on the original footprint with vertical extension and structural changes on the premises number 153 Bayside, Rock Quincy. Is the applicant or representative here?
She's actually requesting, she continues to, to...
July 11th.
The request for a change is July 11th? So that they can have a meeting? Oh, so that's the councilor's company?
Okay. In the hallway. Should we get it, or should we just ask?
I spoke to the councilor.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z17-37...
Counselor.
Say it very well.
Bayside.
Bayside.
Bayside, continued? You want to say anything?
No, there's a community meeting scheduled for the 6th, Kennedy Center at 6:00.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, let's continue.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z17-37, Rowan and Zandy, for a finding through the walls of the existing home or reconstruct on the original footprint with vertical extensions and structural changes on the premises number 153 Bayside Road. I'd like to make a motion to continue this until July 11th.
Second.
The motion seen on all favor?
Aye.
It's you all there. New business, matter Z17-58, Kimberly for calling for a coverage for a...
Thank you.
We don't worry about Mike's pronunciation. Chairman, sorry.
It is horrendous. I have to admit that. For a finding to change the use for heavy-duty industrial fitness workout facility on the premises number 155 Old Hollywood Avenue in Quincy. Is the applicant here?
My name's Keith Macalory, and I own the Business Commit to be Fit Studio. It's 1100 square feet. We have about six parking spaces. Average amount of people in each class is about eight people. Classes range 5:30 a.m., 9:45 a.m., and then from four to 7:30 p.m. So we, I think there's a picture, I don't know if you do. So we have parking spots on the side and then parking spots on the left. And then there's key parking.
Key parking.
Any questions for the board?
Not at this time.
No questions?
No.
If anyone wants to speak in favor of this project, in favor, once, twice, three times, while the hearing over. I had a letter from DPW, they have reviewed Semil, and they have no comments.
Thank you.
Anyone wants to speak opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided?
Yes, my name's Joy Lester, and I live at 44 Teague Avenue. And I'm all in favor of small businesses and supporting them. And I think this is a great change from industrial, you know, for the use. My only comment here tonight is that I'd love to see it if you could make some sort of arrangement, maybe with Eastern Nazarene College or one of the other area businesses, maybe the storage facility for additional parking. Because we have people that come and park on our street, which is on Newton Ave, which is one street over. And when the weather's fine, we don't mind, but in the winter months, when we can't get the streets plowed really well, parking's a very big issue, so that's my only comment. And that's, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Once, twice, three times, while the hearing over. Would there be comments?
I think it's a soft use for formerly heavy-duty property, you know. They can be a lot quieter than what was there. Can I ask what music, loud music?
Loud music?
No Pearl Jam, top of our head.
Lucky you didn't sing yourself. Those young kids listening to Pearl Jam.
I wasn't with Jim once, and actually, that's what they play. That was back when I was 12.
I have no questions. I think it's a good use of property.
I'm in favor of that.
What's, I think you can vote you then?
Can you look into the pocket? Just to see? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Regarding case Z17-58, Kate from McAvoy, for a finding to change the use from heavy-duty industrial to a fitness workout facility on the premises number 155 Old Hollywood Avenue, Quincy. I'd like to make a motion to grant the requested finding, with the understanding that the property owner and the operator will try to find additional parking.
Second. Second.
The motion seen on all favor? Guys have it. Matter number Z17-59, Louis Barros, for a special permit, blood plane variance filing to increase the number of growing units in the existing structure for 1, 2. Number 433 Quincy Shore Drive, is the applicant or the counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Rob Plummer from Plummer. I do represent the applicant here, Louis Barros, with respect to his property at 433 Quincy Shore Drive. If I may, just received a correspondence, a petition that was filed with this board this evening by a number of neighbors, and we were not privy to that at all. In my client's best interest, he has requested a continuance of this matter. He has a petition himself, you know, a number of residents who are in support of his proposal here before this board. Many of them were not able to attend this evening to verbally voice their support this evening. He feels it's in his best interest to continue this to a later date.
What kinds of timeframe are we looking at?
Well, we're looking at the first hearing in August. August 1st? I'm happy to present this evening to the board as they feel and leave the public comments open. I don't know how the board would like to handle that.
Well, I would like the chairman probably to be here if he could be, to hear everything, so maybe... How many people are here for this matter tonight? Are we trying to move it to August when we're on vacation, right? Yeah, a community meeting. Council?
We did, yeah, with the support of Council Harris. We did have a neighborhood meeting in the mail. There were probably 12 residents that appeared there. They were relatively quiet, too many questions, but not real neighborhood opposition. So again, not privy to this petition until this evening, unfortunately.
Give us one, one second. I know all your constituents are here. I would rather put it off, but my concern is, I did mention that there was a petition. It really was a petition.
We didn't really know to what extent until I started this evening.
Right, we didn't.
But there was, there was some opposition, actually, yeah.
These folks, I mean, to be put off, I mean, I, to be put off again is, again, that's up to you folks. Well, I know we did hold a community meeting. We, you know, there was a petition. There was correspondence that there was a petition between us, so, I mean, I know that was presented tonight, but that's to be expected, because you have a petition as well, correct?
We do.
Yes, but everyone, we hear it and decide on that.
Why don't we give a gist of what they have to say?
Yeah, why don't we give a gist of where people stand, where people feel, and then go from there? Yeah, why don't you present? We'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize. So again, the property we're here concerning is 433 Quincy Shore Drive. It is a single-family residence, approximately 11,215 square foot lot, located in a residence A, zoning district, which allows for a set of family residence. The lot is currently improved by a little over 4,000 square foot, single-family residence. This residence is a five or six-bedroom, four full baths, and two half baths. So what my client is proposing is to add a second unit. This is a first and second floor proposal. Both units would be two-bedroom units with two baths as well. To do this, he is requesting a variance for the use as a two-family in a residence A district, which does not allow for that, as well as a finding. This is a non-conforming residence. So we are requesting a finding to find that this proposal will not be substantially more detrimental today than it exists today. There are no exterior changes to the proposal, to the home itself. Everything is internally. This home really has a history and with the prior owner. My client and his wife lived as tenants in one of the units. As most tenants would think, they thought it was a legal residential unit at this, this home. He did purchase it back in 2015, some understanding at that time that it was illegal, you know, and he abandoned that second unit use at that time with the hopes that he might go back before this board, as we are here this evening, to do it right. Again, a history with the neighbors, with the former owner, did a lot of things that I became privy to during our presentation of the Barroses that created a lot of tension with the rest of the neighborhood. You know, no disclosure, doing... You know, no disclosure, doing things as he wished. He was before this board back in two thousand ten, requesting a, a three-family, which was a set-up with Ron at that time. My client's motivation for this proposal this evening is not about money. He has a sister-in-law
Easy to have folks.
He has a, he has a sister-in-law who lives, who lives next door. One of the occupants is, that would, that would occupy the first floor, is a relative, that's him, you know. So that, that is the motivation behind why he's proposing this. Again, we had a neighborhood meeting back in, on May twenty-fifth, there were probably one or dozen neighbors there. And the board is delivering for what it's worth. I think it's important for the board to consider, you know, the makeup of this particular neighborhood. It's an interesting neighborhood. Residence A zoning district, there are a number of, you know, multifamily residences, both on Hubby, Quincy Shore Drive, Atlantic Street as well. There's many different-sized lots, many different-sized homes in this neighborhood as well. This particular property on Quincy Shore Drive is a large lot, exceeding lot size, its summit is double the size. Nothing changed to the exterior, other than a second means of egress off the back of the home. The parking for this, for this property as it exists today, it's one means of egress enough, the existing driveway, it's a two, two-car garage, and there's two additional spaces as well that are not stacked parking. So from the, from the outside, nothing, nothing changes. Obviously, you know, the burden of the finding, I think, is easy, this will certainly not be substantially more detrimental, the finding is a story, you know, it's, there's really no hardship for this, you know, for this variance, you know, we understand that, it's going to be probably testimony this evening in that respect. It is what it is, you know. I think we're here tonight just to ask for this board's consideration and, and granting this, this relief. If my client may, he'd like to say a few words to this board as well, if any could, but we'll keep it brief, I know you have a lot of the agenda this evening.
Right, right. Guys, just a question. How long has your client lived in that property before he purchased?
How long has you rented?
About a year and a half.
About a year and a half. About a year and a half before he purchased in two thousand fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. Where on the plan is, is the exterior second way of egress?
It's up to the rear of the home, it's just a couple stairs off the back that's proposed.
Is it just to the first floor? On the third floor or the second floor?
It's on the first floor.
Okay.
There's an interior, interior stairs that have to be reconfigured
Okay.
To allow
So the spiral is going on?
The spiral will be removed, that exists today. The stairs themselves will be reconfigured for the second-floor unit down to the first floor and then out to the rear, the rear of the home.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further questions?
Why?
Thank you, zoning board, and thank you, members of the audience. I just wanted to take a moment, so first of all, considering this proposal, as we said, we'd like to have the opportunity to, versus, we just were privy to the objection tonight. The other thing is as well, we do have a petition that on a household basis has four times to support, and the petition was received, we went by individual houses, we did not go by the, you know, members of the household, so if there was one person, the owner signed that was not, and I can tell you that we see tremendous enthusiasm for the neighborhood about this, and unfortunately, we have some personal matters, health-wise, that people couldn't be able to support. So I'd just like to leave you with what I call the five Ps, I'm going to characterize that, and I'm going to face the opposition, because some of these people, the people who pay to cut our lawn, to do our, to do some of our work, they come into our house, so we're kind of surprised by the objection, we don't understand why. So if there is some character objection, my objection is to tell you about our character. So Mia and I bought this house, we're first-generation immigrants, we're very well-educated people, I have a doctor from Morton, I have a master's from MIT, MBA, my, my wife here, she's a master's degree, she teaches at a public schools, I've done public and private service, I've worked for Bush, the Bush administration, Deval Patrick, I was one of the founders of the Life Sciences Initiative, which is one of the big job creators for the state, it's a billion-dollar initiative. So if this is a character issue, I'd like to see if there's anyone else in the neighborhood that brings those kind of credentials and education, and, and commitment to public service and private service. Mia is a teacher at Dear Boy Newton School in Goerchester, which she's done for twenty-five years, tremendous amount of work within her city kids. We're proud parents, we have three children, two of our children are in college, one of them is a freshman at Morton School, the other one from Phillips Academy, and works on Wall Street, and we have a third child. I hope you can hear me, if you can, I can speak up a little bit. Also, I, I think that we're proficient in terms of our profession, as I mentioned, and I mentioned in public service, the petition, the three times is strong, there's a third P, and I just wanted to sit here because I feel that, and some of this is more personal than professional. If you walk up and down Fullby Street and Atlantic Street, which are by your neighborhood, there are twenty-four two-family homes, and three-family homes on that street alone, and that's probably represents about fifty percent of the homes. If you walk to the next door between us, it's a two-family home, they signed our petition, they didn't sign theirs, so the two-family home next to one of the objectives signed our petition. If you go to Atlantic, on Quincy Shore Drive, there's four homes, we had a four that signed our petition. So we don't understand what the objection is, we think it's personal, and as, as a, as a first-generation immigrant, and as someone that knows a lot about business, I feel personally harassed by the objection, I don't feel that it's based, based on legitimate grounds, and I'm glad to have an open forum to speak on, right? None of the neighbors ever came to us and said they had an objection, and I think a lot of it was really harassment. We have neighbors that come to our house, or family members, they won't even let them stand on their lawn, we have cameras pointed at our house twenty-four hours a day, okay? We have two cameras pointed at our house, in our driveway, twenty-four hours a day, who knows for what reason? We didn't ask to be filmed, so imagine living in that condition, we have invested a lot in that neighborhood, we bought that house for almost a million dollars, and we own the house next door, which is half a million dollars. No one in that neighborhood has made more of an investment in that neighborhood than we have. So I don't understand what the objection is, I'm personally offended by the objection, I think it's personal, I think some of it, you can guess where it might be, but I know it's a Residence A, I know we're asking for a variance, I know it's, they're not granting a variance, and the petition fits for itself, we want to give the opportunity to the neighbors who are enthusiastic about our proposal, who rejected their petition, as they went up and down the street, tried to get signatures, they went to every house, they only were able to get about twelve or thirteen, we got thirty-four signatures.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Say you're the most wonderful person in the world
Yeah.
We read, you're going to sell the house eventually, because we're not going to live forever
Yeah.
And now I have a two-family house, the one family's up. Because what we have to do, understand, is we don't take these personal things, and we serve it up the probate court, but we look, but we look at what, with what we're doing, we can't take responsibility for all the other houses that have been approved or not approved or illegally made over the years.
Yeah.
So I just wanted you to say, I just wanted to come out and say that, that, you know, what our criteria is, is something for long-term.
I understand, I understand that, I mean, there's no detriment, there's no change, and I think for the city, it's additional tax revenue, so I don't see
And if I may, may I speak to that, Mr. Chairman, as well, I think that's quite a misperception by many reasons, that, well, if it happens here, it's going to happen here as well. And that's, every property, if this is really, though your approach is really subjective, you know, and, and not every property is going to lend itself or be able to accommodate, you know, a second unit, you know, this one does, you know, we do this, I do this all the time, you know, this one, this one does, without it being a real detriment to the community, the neighborhood, you know, it's, nothing's going to change. The house as a single-family residence can support six bedrooms. Think of the size of the family in a six-bedroom home, you know, kids eventually getting their driver's licenses, you know, you could have six cars there at one time. What's being proposed are two, two-bedroom units, you know, what does that bring with it? Less than what a six-bedroom home would bring, I think, you know, so I think a single, single-family home could be worse.
Counselor, just a question, I don't know if you know the answer, I'm not holding to it by any means, because I don't even know where we'd find the answer. Do you know when, because I know this area intimately, growing up in this area, there are a, a number of multifamilies, do you know when this was rezoned to Res A? Because obviously, there was a number of multifamilies, we've even approved some multifamilies on these streets, I think we had Atlantic Street in front of us a couple months ago.
Yeah.
So, I'm just wondering, do you know when?
Yeah, I don't have that, obviously, there's, there's a number of non, now non-conforming properties.
Conform, yeah.
I can only speak to the zoning itself, the further you, you get to Hancock Street is where it becomes not residency, allowing this, you know, so maybe at one time.
I was trying to look at that myself, I was trying to see where the cutoff was.
Yeah, I don't have that, of course, I don't have that here.
I figured it was always resbeen, because of the number of multifamilies, I never even realized
Yeah, it's strange, I've been looking at it, we looked at it, you know, Louise and I both researched it, and it's not just two families, there's four families, there's three families.
Yeah.
And
It's not very likely. No, 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 I tried to just
No, I'm talking about any of the Residence A district, there's, there's four families, three families, two families, you know, and that's probably throughout the city because of the zoning changes over time, so, yeah, a lot of these are now non-conforming residences, and some of them have the two and threes that are not as large as this particular property, you know, not as large a home to be able to accommodate two real, you know, good-sized residential units like this one does, you know. This is on Quincy Shore Drive as well, it is not tucked back, you know, in the neighborhood, the Hubby Streets and Atlantic Streets were in the back, you know, with these, a lot of them are smaller lots, you know, you know, listen, I, I know, you know, the hardship of the variance, and that's certainly the question here, however, this board can still, you know, consider, you know, and granting this, the, 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 that he's requesting. And then, it's, in my opinion, it's not going to ca- cause any harm to the community, you know, by doing this.
Do you have any more questions?
I would be done.
Yes, I, I just wanted to meet up, if you could stand up, because I think this is a, so, you know, we have the residence staff, and that's obviously all the issues here. I think I'm done, no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone want to speak in favor? In favor? Once, twice, three times, put up on the hearing, opposed or, we received the above threatened program, a project, they have no comments this time, so says the popular public works.
I would love to go first and speak again.
I haven't even started.
I just, I just cannot wait to speak.
Okay, anyone? Let him speak. Anyone opposed or undecided? Please step up, state your name, and address the break.
So, members of the, members of the committee, my name's Philip Nazrallah, I'm the attorney for Brockton, and I guess I'll say at the beginning, having served for twelve years on the Brockton zoning board, I know one thing for certain, you appreciate breadth, so I'm going to be real with you.
Thank you.
In fact, I'm going to ask the individual neighbors who are against it not to speak, that I think I can cover everything in about two minutes. And I respect the presentation made by Brother Counsel, however, as he admitted, he said everything except gracefully skirted around the issue of hardship. Under chapter forty-eight, section ten, it's very clear, and it's clear, so it allows board members not to be head counters as to how many for, how many against, it's not a popularity contest, it's not about a person, the applicant, is a good guy variance or not, it's about whether or not the elements of forty-eight, section ten have been met. And applicants said there's five Ps, the important thing is, there's an S, S, and T, soil conditions, shape, or topog- topography. Is there a hardship that emanates out of those three items? And does it derogate from the intent of the zoning scheme and bylaws? Clearly, you're in a single-family district, you want to put a two-family. Should not investors or residents who move into a single-family district have some expectation that there'll be a compliance with that zoning code, and not be spot zoning as being asked by Brother Counsel? I won't belabor this any further, I can talk about what my clients have urged me to talk about, a lack of code compliance, lack of this, lack of that, I was here seven years ago, when an application for a variance on the same property came forward, it was denied. I don't think there's much more to be said in our position, other than that not having heard anything to support the variance, or, or sustain the requirements under forty-eight, section ten, which calls for the variance into those subtle elements, it's the applicant's burden to prove, not all those against it, to say what it did not mean. So with that, I will leave it to discretion of the board, and simply in respect of the state, that the application does not need to stand it for a variance, and it should be denied.
Thank you, counsel. Anyone else who wants to speak opposed or denied? Opposed or?
John Roloff, sixty-two Grandma Road. First of all, I want to say this is not personal, I have never met that applicant before tonight, okay? And I would like to say that this sets a horrible precedent, okay, because there's a lot of non-conforming properties throughout the city, just because there's some non-conforming properties in the neighborhood, doesn't mean you're supposed to make the rest of the neighborhood non-conforming too. This is residential A with a big lot size, eleven thousand square feet. I have fifteen thousand square feet in my lot size, I will build a two-family on my property if you approve this. This is just terrible zoning, I mean, this is just a horrible thing, plus it's in a flood zone on top of it, I mean, so, I mean, there's absolutely no way, you should just say this is not approved, for someone as smart as MIT and stuff, you don't understand that zoning in Quincy, okay? And the zoning in Quincy is, if you want to build multifamilies
John, John.
Well, he spoke to everybody
I understand.
But I mean, well, I mean, that was wrong, what he did, okay? He's not here to lecture the people of Quincy who have lived here forever, okay? Some people can't come into Quincy and do whatever they want, just because they know certain people, or they're good, everyone should be treated the same, and we're supposed to have zoning because there's supposed to be rules, and if you want to develop multifamilies, you buy property in residential B, residential C, business B, business C, or industrial, and unfortunately, we do give out variances if there is not a hardship, so you can't use that as an excuse, because all the time, they give out variances, and there is no hardship, so, it would be nice to actually have a hardship to get a variance, but it seems like, you know, it takes more than, you know, a hardship, maybe just donating money to the right people, okay? And right now, it's not about, I haven't even checked the office of campaign finance on the applicant, but I can't wait till I get home, thank you very much.
Anybody else who wants to speak opposed or undecided?
I'm Steve Beatty, I live at fifty-nine Hubby Street, Catty Corner across the street. Three quick things. First, increase in density and population always changes the neighborhood. This is detrimental to me. I understand, I talked to a number of people who lived on this street, there were eighty kids on this street in the fifties, but parents and kids and grandparents living in a house are not quite the same as lots of apartments. Second, I object strenuously, and it is not the current applicant's problem, to building something, calling it a single-family house, leaving me to believe that his kids and family are going to move in, and then deciding to make it into a multifamily house. Just recently, that objection has been amplified, as we discovered what happens when you haven't done all the proper proof stuff in London, and burning things down. If somebody wants to build a three-family house, I think they should go to the city of Quincy, put in an application, and have that place inspected that way. Third, the current owner of this house, I know very little of, he was nice enough to invite us over early on, and it was reasonably clear that he wanted to make it into a multifamily, and I told him that myself and most of the immediate neighbors would oppose that, and it's not him, it's his predecessor who demonstrated all the things that could go wrong, putting in three apartments, moving stoves in, moving stoves out, having delivery trucks show up in the dark of night, and having work done on the house early on Sunday morning so no one would see it. This is not his problem, it's the house's problem, and when he sells it, the same thing could happen again. Thank you very much for listening.
Question, sir, sir, you alluded to that there's been work done on the houses there, has, do we, have any permits been pulled, or is this new construction, or is it?
There has been work done on the house, we have been in there, we have not been immediately.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to
That's a good question.
I didn't, I didn't know. Does your applicant, counselor, has any work been done on the house since they've moved in?
Since he purchased the home, he has not done any work.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and again, and I'll repeat and reiterate, he has not continued the, you know, the violated nature of
Sure, appreciate it, thank you.
He's got a single family.
Thank you.
Yep.
So what, counselor here?
Yes.
Anyone else in the audience?
Anyone else in the audience? So, good evening, my name is Faris, going off neck here from something out of Ward 1. So as you know, I'm frequently before you, and I have been eight years that I've served in the office, I have opposed every single application where they have wanted to add a second unit to a residence A property. There is a reason, we have to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. This is something that we talk about as board counselors. A single-family-only home, when you look along Quincy Shore Drive, there's been a lot of overdevelopment. We need to protect this, it's two deaths for the area, it is a large lot, but what we're saying is, single-family, oversized... A single-family home with a nice yard is a great amenity in this area in Quincy. Need to protect the amenities, you know, need to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. It's residence A, it's zoned, single-family only, no exceptions to be ignored by this board. For sure, not in Ward 1, do not grant this exception, because shape, soil, topography, those are the three reasons to grant relief for zoning. At wanting to add a second unit is greed, that is not a hardship. This is a beautiful, single-family home, let's protect the integrity of the single-family neighborhoods that this city has. It's what makes this city so strong, thank you.
Oh, no, no, I was gonna, I may have stayed here. Being inexperienced, I didn't read correspondence. Let me do that, then you can speak. Okay? Yeah, I have Counsel Harris who wants to say something, let me just go through this real quick. Oh, okay. I have 23 signatures, and I'm not gonna read them, who are opposed. I have another that's also in favor, if you can tell me those now. I have a letter from John Gill to Counsel Harris. I'm writing this to my, first of all, I have it here, but I'll read it, Counsel doesn't mind. I'm writing this to my mother, A. Maria Shewie. Her background board is the house at 433 Quincy Shore Drive. I have her care given and running two households, so my time is very valuable. Since my mother and I have so strongly opposed the variance to make the property a two-family, well, I am taking the time to address this proposal. I attended the informal meeting, informational meeting in Marina Bay, I also climbed to attend the 27 zoning board meeting at City Hall. Is this person here? You want me to read the letter, or do you want to say something?
Sure, no.
My parents, my father is now deceased, has lived on Atlantic Street for 40 years. Based on the renovations that were made by the previous owner, are not being made aware of the extent of the renovations being made. They lost their ocean view from the second floor bedroom. They've always loved the neighborhood and have a great relationship with their neighbors on Atlantic Street and Hubby Street. My mother and I are certain that the proposal to change of the traffic effect are covering a neighbor's quality of life. We feel it would result in public traffic problems based on its prominent location at the corner of Quincy Shore Drive and Hubby Street. We feel that these problems would especially affect the surrounding neighbors on Hubby Street, whom we have always supported, who also proposed this proposal. We believe that the house should be made as it is, a single-family dwelling. Thank you for your consideration, Diane Grill. All right. I have a letter from Mr. Peter Young. To Mr. Dukas, sir, I am writing in reference to the modification of 433 Quincy Shore Drive from a single-family house to a second residential addition, to two additional parking spaces. I am deeply concerned, because this is the third time this house has come up for modifications in the past five years. There's been any problems with the diversion process, most of which the neighbors are very much opposed to.
To traffic?
Traffic.
And construction?
Oh, three-time construction, and we, without permits, now they have already hired a subcontractor.
Contractor?
Contractor, I guess, to start the, those, the, the, probably, so he's opposed. Just not right here. It isn't, it isn't, all right. Counsel Harris.
Thank you, folks. I'm gonna be very brief. My role, of course, is to hold a community meeting, get the feel of, again, of the folks, the abuddies. This is really about the merits of the application, finding the sample. And I just want to say, it is, it is not personal. So with that, I leave it in your fine hands, thank you.
And we had 24 signatures in support of the petition, of the continuation. What do you want to say?
You know, after speaking with my client, he still would, you know, request a continuance to the office.
Does he want to hear our comments?
Absolutely, hear your comments as well, you know, and I think that will give him a little bit of time to think about this evening. Have an opportunity to maybe respond with those neighbors that are in support as well.
Well, I guess, the thing is, I don't wanna, you know, belabor this too much, but, but also go, give us the board here. I mean, do we have more testimony back then? That's what he's requesting. We let everyone come back to speak, because they were opposed again? I mean, it's, it's, don't talk about new plan, you're not gonna have a new plan to give us.
This particular proposal, there's no new plan, no revised plan. So the reasons for the continuance are just that there were individuals, and many of them, who were in support, that were not able to make it here this evening, you know? With respect to Counsel Harris, I understood there was opposition, you know? Again, I received the petition this evening, didn't know it was to that extent, is all I meant to say this evening. But there's quite a bit of neighborhood support as well. Will that influence people coming here verbally, you know, posting their support? Will that change the mind of the board members? I don't know. Sometimes we're instructed by our clients, and he's, you know, respectfully requesting a continuance to that date.
Let's see what the board thinks.
The issue that I have is that Officer Barrows bought the house knowing it was ZonA. And knowing it was a single-family, knowing it had history. And I'd be reluctant to permit it, that's, right now, that's what I feel.
My feeling is that I don't think that the strength of the request for the variance itself is strong enough to support the application.
I don't see any hardship here that exists that would overturn a resident A designation, I will vote negative on it.
I mean, I think this is a difficulty we have as a board, and I don't speak to the people that are up here, I'm kinda speaking to people in the audience, because we see a lot of different proposals, oftentimes it's for a blighted property like this, where we're, you know, maybe excited at the measures of enhancing a neighborhood. This man has a beautiful residence, it's a beautiful home, and it's a big lot, it is. And it probably has the opportunity to easily be, you know, a multi-family. But it's zoned residential A, and you'll hear it on the street every single day, and we hear it every single day, that, you know, Quincy's overdeveloped, and we need to protect our neighborhoods, to Counselor Forrest's point. So I know it might feel personal, but at this point, that's, I'd be inclined to agree with my board members, that there's just, there's no underlying reason for us to approve it.
But I do give you an opportunity to withdraw.
If it's the board's decision this evening not to grant the request for a continuance, and I respectfully request a withdrawal from this.
I think that's a good discovery, Counsel.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we've got a case, Z17-59, Lewis Barrows, for a fine, for a special permit, floodplain, a variance, and a finding to increase the number of dwelling units in the existing structure from one to two on the premises number four, 33 Quincy Shore Drive. I make a motion that if you withdraw, I will present it.
Second?
Second.
The motus hiccup in favor? Let's take a five-minute break.